Mayor, recording has begun.
Don't judge me online. I have my flats upstairs.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 18th, 2024 Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Winkler.
Present.
Councilman Challenger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Let's see, Councilman Winkler? I'm sorry, Councilman Jenkins.
He is online.
I'm here.
Mayor James, do you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I counsel if you've had a moment to look at tonight's meeting agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the meeting agenda for June 18th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And if you all have had a moment to look at the minutes from June 11th, I will entertain a motion as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from June 11th, 2024, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This brings us to a very exciting part of our agenda where we get to swear in our newest officer here. And Chief, I'm going to have you come up before I come down there to do the official swearing in to tell us a little bit about who is joining the force.
Thank you, Mayor. My privilege tonight to introduce the council to Nicole McGovern. She grew up in La Plata. She's a graduate of Madonna High School. She began her career with the La Plata Police Department in the summer of 2022 as our intern. She was our first summer intern. Nicole was the first, Nicole's internship provided her firsthand experience into the functions, the duties, and the roles of the various members of the agency and divisions. When summer ended, she returned to Catawba. Got it? Just like it's spelled. College in Salisbury, North Carolina, where she completed her bachelor's degree in administration of justice. While still attending college, Nicole was undergoing our extensive hiring and background process where she showed a great deal of determination, drive, and commitment by using holiday breaks and other times off to come back up here to complete her background process. This level of determination, drive, and commitment will serve our residents, business owners, and visitors well. Nicole graduates from the Enrundle County Police Academy on June 26, and she will immediately be assigned to one of our certified field training officers to begin her road experience. So it's with the great pride and privilege that we introduce Nicole to the council.
Let's make this official.
Congratulations. The floor is ours. You can stand wherever you want. You're now a police officer.
Throughout the almost eight months of being in the hands of this county, I would think my family, the first part of the whole thing. Without mom, dad, stepdad, brother, sister-in-law, I don't think I would have been through this, as well as the people in the department that support us. Experience being to help me out of experience. I know it's been hard, especially for me. I just didn't thank everybody, especially all of you guys for being here.
Good job.
Our honor, remember, it represents public trust. Everything you can, never a lot like that. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Well, what a great way to start this meeting. So thank you very much, and best of luck to you. Next, that brings us to our public comment. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please state your name, whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits, and limit your comments to three minutes. All right, moving on. Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our report was submitted, and does anybody have any questions?
I'll open up the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the report. My questions are, in March of this year, it was a total outlier for all of their months and even the months of prior years in March. I saw box office stores, Walmart particularly. Can you tell me what happened in March?
So the outlier of it being, yeah. I don't have a real explanation. Sometimes you have crime that ebbs and flows. You know, the calls at the Walmart were very high. Sometimes when they bring in a new loss prevention officer, they're a little more active than a seasoned loss prevention officer. But if you like, we can go back and try to dissect that for you, but I usually start worrying when I see trends that are two and three months long, but it's a good observation.
And then my second question for collisions, what's the difference in a, I think it says traffic stop versus a warning, citation, and equipment repair order? The last one, I think it just says traffic stop. What's the difference?
So the car stops is the number of cars that we stop. During those car stops, people can be issued a citation, they can be issued a warning or a repair order. Sometimes they can be issued all three. We're getting close back to our normal 25, 75% breakdown in warnings and citations. It was really kind of out of the norm last month, but we also had a large number of DUI arrests. So Mr. Covington's office has kind of a set protocol, what they like us to do with types of citations and types of warnings to make the prosecution more successful on his end. So when we have a larger amount of DUIs than normal, then you'll probably see a larger number of citations than there are warnings.
So the car stops is a total of the other three?
Yeah, those other three, they occurred within those hundred and whatever car stops.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense?
They occur within, but they're not the, that's not what make up car stops?
No, we made a, looks like 140 car stops, and during those 140 car stops, there was 174 citations, 85 warnings, and three repair orders issued. So sometimes a driver can get more than one. They may get a citation and a repair order.
Okay.
Or they have multiple violations, and the officer writes one citation and several warnings.
Okay, I'm clear. And the juvenile arrest report that we were talking about, you're still working on trying to compile that?
Yeah, we got the original data in, and that's why I put it was under construction. I didn't want anybody to think we forgot. But when we looked at the numbers, the raw numbers, we needed to have a little bit more information, especially when we were looking for, doing comparisons with the Sheriff's Department, because they have the school resource officers, and a lot of their activity comes from things that occur at the school. So we wanted to kind of separate that out as to what was going on at the schools and then what was going on in the community, because I think what's going on in the community is going to be a better comparison for us. So it's just being able to dissect that data.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. Couple questions, Chief. On the slide that talks about impaired driving, is there any pattern with respect to the age of those folks that you have arrested? I mean, are they teenagers, or are they new drivers, or is it just random?
You talking about the impaired drivers?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, impaired drivers, age nine.
Yeah, I don't have a breakdown of it, but usually they're a little bit older. I don't remember any of us, any of them being juveniles that were arrested for impaired driving.
Okay. And then on page 14, emergency psychological evaluation, so is this a new tracking? Or you've been tracking this for a time, or just a new way to track this information?
Well, we had the increase of people taking their lives. So we went back and started looking really hard at how many emergency psychological evaluations we have within a month. So we just thought we would bring that data to council. This doesn't, this doesn't show a totality of calls for mental health calls. They have to meet a criteria in order for emergency evaluation to take place. In fact, our officers were over at the Department of Social Services today on a reported overdose. It ended up being a mental health case, but it did not meet the criteria to take them to the hospital for an evaluation.
Okay, and then two more questions on the issue about juvenile tobacco enforcement. Does that include vaping?
Well, the enforcement is at the shops that sell the tobacco. Now, I'm happy to report over the weekend, we had some more activity, and several of our merchants passed. So when I prepared this, it was 100% failure rate. Now, now we've had some merchants that are passing, and that just means that someone who is under the age of 21, that they're identifying before they sell tobacco, a tobacco product.
And then just one final question on page, I guess it's page 23, where you talk about the Traffic Safety Specialist Program and different categories. I would applaud the department for that, and there's a reference to zero deaths in Maryland. So does that suggest that there are resources that can be obtained for the town from either the state or the county with their safety programs, for neighborhood programs to reduce speeds?
The zero death program, it, that really affects us is the training they provide our officers, like what you have to do to achieve to be a Traffic Safety Specialist I, II, or III. I would be guessing to tell you if there was funding out there. There is funding from time to time that comes out of the State Highway Administration, but it's usually very targeted for DUI enforcement and sobriety checkpoints. There's not a whole lot out there for just speed enforcement.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I have a question. Can you update us on the speed cameras?
I can. We should be issuing citations by the 27th of this month, the one on Radio Station Road. The signage went up for the speed cameras on Route 6, both by Archbishop Neal and by Grace Lutheran. So we should have installation of the machines here shortly. We'll have, like we've done before, the 30-day warning period, and then we'll start issuing citations. Part of it was thankful to Jeff Gardner. He helped us with misutility. All that had to be done before we could put any signs and before the units could be staged. So we're hoping for a very short turnaround time now that the permits are there, the signage is up.
Could you tell us a little bit about the MML Top Cop next week?
I can. I can't tell you who the winner is, but it's from a municipality in Prince George's County. The breakfast is on Monday at 7:30. It's in the MML Guide. It is open to anyone. Being the vice chair, I'm actually the one that's going to be presenting the Top Cop with their award, along with Governor Moore, and the Lieutenant Governor will be at the breakfast as well. The breakfast is open to anybody who would like to attend. So if you want to get up that early in the morning and you want to go sit through breakfast, then you're welcome to join us.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. So Chief, I saw in your report that you have kind of a to-be-determined scheduling of a clergy breakfast to discuss active threats.
Yes, sir.
I think, could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, what, I've wanted to have a clergy breakfast for a while. I just think it's a good thing to do. So our goal is to bring in our clergy. We have seen threats here and successful threats at churches around the country. So we plan to issue an invitation, have them come in. We're going to have breakfast, and then we're going to talk about the type of training we can offer their church. We're not going to be doing the training there, and then we'll schedule it. Actually, Captain Bagley has done it at least twice, maybe three times at my church. So always gets great reviews, and it's really, how do you handle it should you have an active threat occur during the service?
I think that's excellent. It's unfortunately, that's, that's, it's needed. I would suggest that in the planning of that, you know, it's discussed as far as like church's children's ministry and nursery care and all those things. We've had some training at La Plata Baptist Church from former Army Rangers, been certified and all stuff, but there's all sorts of issues that have to go with the layout of the building itself, who has access. And I think it's really great that, you know, our local police are taking an interest in making sure that all questions can be asked, because if our area churches aren't thinking about it, they're, they're not doing a solid for their congregants and anybody that could be visiting. So I really appreciate that outreach opportunity.
It's a shame in this day and age, we have to have that discussion, but we have to have that discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Next up, Director Harrington, and I believe she is online.
Yes.
Good evening. Does Council have any question for Director Harrington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Director Harrington, thank you for your report. I like the new format. On the inspections overview, you have a count, you have mileage, and you have number passed. So there's a variance in the dip, in the count and the numbers passed. So does that mean that they failed, or were they completed?
So most likely, they were failed. This is all new information and municity, so there's going to be a little bit of, you know, issues with the numbers as we're integrating everything in, because we're not really adding in the mileage or any of those kind of details at this point. So that's something that I can definitely look at and verify for next time.
Thank you. And the mileage is the, a trip from the town hall to the location or from location to location? What's the mileage?
That would technically be from town hall to the location.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions down here? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Harrington, again for the report and also the formatting. Just a quick, is there any update to the code revision specifically complete streets and disrearly house nuisance updates for those possible code revisions?
So I do not have any significant updates. They still are under, they're being drafted. So once I have some significant updates, I'll make sure to let everyone know.
And then the, it's finally been the APFO. Is that still under review, legal review, or by the planning commission?
So that is back under staff. We're taking a look at things after a few discussions, kind of making sure that we're looking at different tiers accommodating commercial, residential, so that way we don't have all of the allocations going to one, one spot or the other. So staff is kind of reworking it, and then we'll send that back up for legal.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Director Stahl, come on down. Does anybody have any questions for Director Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Director Stahl, comment paving on Norfolk and King's Grant. Looks great, feels great. I know sometimes residents get a little antsy when work's being done on a main drag, but I think the results were fantastic as far as we can see, and I know residents really appreciate the work that was done there. So thanks for overseeing that. I did have a question, because I saw on your report that we're still pending some HOA dedications. Like, how's the process going with King's Grant and getting some of these sticking points dedicated back to the town? Just, what's the?
I would say slow. It is in their court right now. There is, I would say, the two coming off of State Highway. Both of those have been dedicated there, and so that's the one that we've just got to have some more negotiations with State Highway as to what their percentage of that deal is, because of course, all that runoff that's running down between those two houses is coming off 488. And so that one was fairly easy, and the vice president of the HOA is one of those houses, and so I think that one has worked out. We could go in there and do that. But to be honest, my feeling has been that State Highway should share some of that cost in that, and so I think it's important to try and negotiate at a little higher level with State Highway Administration. The other project that we have prioritized in King's Grant is that pipeline that goes down between the houses that are on Wiltshire and the houses that are on Suffolk. There, in my conversation last week with Mr. Scott, that one is the challenge, because one of the residents that's about halfway down doesn't want to sign, and it's because he has a shed over top of the pipeline. And so we didn't want to get into something where we did, and we ended up leaving out a portion of the pipe. We might have to eventually get to that, but Mr. Scott wanted to work on that some more to see if he couldn't get that one. Those are the two top priorities for us, other than what we were doing to repair pipelines under the roads that we were paving. Going back to your comment about the paving in there, there is the issue with the striping in King's Grant. Nobody wants to have the striping put back, so we need to have a discussion about that on the safety committee. We did that as a, as a safety issue originally, but I know it's become kind of a political challenge.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I don't think I differ, I know Councilman Jenkins and I have talked about it in the past. I think it's helpful in those big decisions, aesthetic or otherwise, we have a representative where there are, you know, where we have HOA representation, come be a part of the discussion, because it's such a big dramatic effect. And so I think as we look at this again, it'd be helpful to have them part of that discussion, because if.
We didn't, we didn't plan on restriping. We, it takes, we like to let the oil work out of the asphalt for a long period of time so that we don't end up repainting right away. So we were planning to wait anyhow, so it's not a big issue, and we thought we'd have a safety committee meeting, look at that, and then we'll involve the HOA.
Keep me on the loop on that, because obviously, it's my word, and I want to be of help to the residents in that way. I wanted to circle back on the two properties coming off State Highway that you talked about. Look, the state should bear some responsibility there for the problems that are being caused. Have we, what is our, what's the status of communications about that issue to the state so far?
We have discussed it with our local La Plata shop. They have not been very receptive. Most all of stormwater in State Highway actually comes out of Baltimore, so they would have to bring people down from Baltimore. As far as they're concerned, it's really a La Plata problem. But what we were looking to do in this was to ask them to provide some material. We weren't asking them to do anything. We just wanted them to provide the material. And what we were looking for was for them to provide the riprap, because we felt like that it would be appropriate to deepen the ditch and to also then take and riprap the entire length through between those two homes. It's still somewhat of a problem in there, because we have to remove their fences, and we want to do it right when we take all those fences down and then have to put them back. The big problem is, we're going to have to widen the ditch considerably, and so their fences are going to be pushed back quite a bit. It, it could still be somewhat controversial, but our thought was that trying to slow that water down there between the houses would certainly behoove. We do have to replace the pipes under Norfolk, but I think the issue there was mainly, you know, trying to figure out how to, because as you all know, the storms that we're getting, interestingly enough, right now, we're in a pretty stiff drought. And I'll give you some, in a few seconds, I'll give you some statistics over at the plant that have been very, that I've really seen for the first time here in La Plata. But it, it does, you know, it's getting to be the time of year this summer where we need to really look at that and try to do something. And I'm, you know, I'll try and take it a little bit higher. I think I'll try to get with Kim Tran and, you know, see if she can't help us out there to try and help with some of the material.
Are these discussions verbal, or are they written?
Verbal.
Okay. At what point do we start, you know, correspondence that we can refer back to, and that's one question? And, and the other, kind of along the same lines are, what's our timeframe for just trying to go forward with a project and seeking reimbursement from the state later? Because while we're in a drought now, you know, I can see the project getting delayed and then not being able to do it because of winter or something like that, and then all of a sudden, we're in May again.
I would just say, in my previous experience with the state, it's very, very difficult to get the state to reimburse you for anything.
Right.
If you don't have an agreement, what I try to do with them, to not put them on the spot, is to come up with a verbal agreement first and then verify it back in writing once the agreement is in place. I don't like to push somebody, no different than I tried to do all along, is come up with a verbal agreement and then, you know, verify everything in writing once the agreement is, you know, based on our meeting the other day, you know, dear Ms. Tran, based on our agreement the other day, we agreed to the following situations and put that into writing. I, I would certainly prefer not to put her on the spot by.
But a request wouldn't be necessarily fully by correspondence in any way, a request for a discussion based on the issues, right?
You know, I mean, I certainly, you know, I, Kim has always taken my calls. I mean, she hasn't distanced herself from me at all. She really, the State Highway's been interesting, even when we were doing down here at Centennial. I had to deal with a whole different, it wasn't through the District 5 office, it was actually through the Baltimore office for stormwater. And so you, there are all these different players that you're dealing with in the process.
Right. I just.
I hear you, what you're saying.
It's, you know, let's say there's a change in leadership over there. It's, you know, let's say there's a change in leadership over there, there's nothing to document or requests, and, you know, who knows if they're taking phone notes or anything based on your calls, right? And and I don't want the homeowners to be under this belief that, hey, we're pushing the state, we're having verbal conversations that haven't, we we can't then reference, right? Like, oh, I talked to you on June fifteenth, it's July fifteenth, I haven't heard back, it's August fifteenth, I haven't heard back. You know, I I don't ever want to be in a position where we're talking to our landlord without documentation.
If we want to put it in writing, we can certainly do that. It's not a problem.
And the homeowners know about the fence?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
At least the one, because she was in the meeting that sat right there, and I, we literally spoke about the fact that, you know, those fences are going to have to go back probably ten feet on either side. Because you, we literally are going to have to, you know, cut that swale through there. It's going to have to be, because of the volume of water, it's going to have to be about my my assumption is eight to ten feet wide in a flat bottom within tapered sides, and so you're going to want to keep the fences back basically to the edge of the easement, but they're both willing to sign over the easement, so.
And it's definitely the lesser of two evils out of those.
Certainly.
For sure. So, all right, thank you for communicating with them, those issues.
If I could, uh, it's been interesting this week. This is one of the few times that I, having been here almost eighteen years, that I have seen the significant differential between water and sewer treated at the wastewater treatment plant and water consumed. Almost ninety-nine percent of the time that I've been here, we have always used less water than we have treated sewer. We've been averaging last year, we averaged nine hundred and thirty-one thousand gallons per day of potable water use in the town, and we averaged about one point one million gallons of treated sewer in the town. I give you the example, last Sunday, we treated seven hundred and sixty-three thousand gallons in the wastewater treatment plant, and I use that as an interesting piece, because generally, everyone is home, and it was Father's Day, and you would expect more use of water and sewer, but we used seven hundred and sixty-three through the wastewater treatment plant. We used over one point two million gallons of potable water in the town. So suddenly, the numbers have totally shifted, and it just shows you how I and I, inflow and infiltration, has an effect on our wastewater treatment plant. Generally speaking, we're treating about twenty percent more water through the wastewater treatment plant than we sell potable water. That, those numbers have significantly changed in the last several weeks, and so it has been very interesting, because we have been trying to get our numbers up in Module One, which I've explained, we just finished the upgrade in Module One, and the state would like us to treat an average of six hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons a day through Mod One. But when you're only bringing in seven hundred and sixty-three thousand through the plant, I can't starve the other three modules. So um, even running forty percent of the flow through the one module, we only were treating a little over three hundred thousand through the one module, and we were treating a little over a hundred thousand through each of the other modules. We can't let those modules die. We actually feed fresh sewage through those plants, so that we can then use the sewage as a food product for the bacteria that we have. We can't let the bacteria die in those modules. So it has been an interesting quandary for us, because we're we're balancing Mod One and wanting to do some of the testing in Mod One, but because we're getting such a low flow into the plant right now, the numbers coming out of the plant are excellent. We're we're very pleased with the nitrogen numbers and the phosphorus numbers coming out of the plant. Been very, very good, but it has been a very interesting switch with the plant because of the the drought conditions that we're seeing. We're seeing very, very, very low I and I through the plant right now, so been interesting.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Jenkins, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Stahl, for the information, and I would just echo uh, Councilman Trollope's previous comments about the paving operation. Two things, uh, thanks for the notice for the different communities, including Kings Grant and Clark's Run, that was a big help. That did generate some questions to me from Clark's Run residents, and and you probably got some phone calls, I I would assume. Because I tried to explain them uh, as best I could, why we, why we can't do all of Clark's Run or certain parts of it, so I tried to explain the funding situation. So thank you for that, and thank you for the notification. I think that helps. And then finally, um, was there any issue or concerns about trucks entering, leaving the the paving site or during the operations? Because I had a citizen call me about that, or email me about that issue.
We are, um, we have had to, you know, for safety purposes, we've had to stop traffic and ask them to wait, because we're doing a lot of milling, and I know some people don't like to wait at all anymore today, and so, you know, when we go out there and stop traffic, it is an issue. We apologize for that, but we are trying to maintain a safe operation in the milling machine, you know, we're we're backing trucks up to the milling machine, hauling out full loads, bringing empty trucks in. There there's quite an operation going on over there. The the contractor that we're using, I think, as stated by Councilman Trollope, does a good job for the town of La Plata, and it has been, but, you know, when we're disrupting people, I had a woman over in Kings Grant the other day, who did not want to wait to get to her home. She said we were obstructing her going to her home. So as soon as we felt that the asphalt was hard enough for her to drive in there, um, we went ahead and let her go to her home. When the asphalt is very soft, we had to roll it first, of course, and so as soon as we had it hard enough, we let her go, and then she filed a complaint that the uh, tar from the asphalt had now stained her driveway, and she had a concrete driveway, and she had black tire marks on that, and what were we going to do about it? I don't know that there's a lot that I can do about that, because that's just one of the challenges with it. But it is something where we have to work with people, and so it's just one of the challenges that we face. We do try and do a good job. As Larson and I spoke last night about some of the money totals, I will tell you that um, in this springtime paving for FY twenty-four, we still had four hundred and fourteen thousand that we're trying to spend before June thirtieth. I'm, I did not have a chance, I I was working on a project up there for Magnolia Gardens this afternoon, and I did not have a chance to look at the tonnage totals that we have, but we're trying very hard before the end of the fiscal year to spend that much of that money. We also have two hundred and four thousand dollars in fund balance that was left from previous years that gives us a little bit of wiggle room. And then in FY twenty-five, we have another seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we're going to spend. So there's still a tremendous amount of paving dollars that are out there to spend. In July, we will bring you the new street list, so that you will see the the pending street list. We're working through the completion of the FY twenty-four list that you saw last year. But, you know, this is, these are some good times for us, because we have seen significant increases in the amount of asphalt or the H U R dollars that we have, which means that we can spend more money paving, and so as much as everyone would like us to be able to come in and you know, pave all of Clark's Run or pave all of Kings Grant, as you know, we do try and spread the wealth, and we're trying to make sure that all the neighborhoods get something. And, you know, I would tell you, having probably driven more streets than most, you know, the condition of the town roads, it's very, very difficult to find a town street that's in, you know, what I would consider poor condition. We look at every year when we do the street list, it is difficult, because we're trying to not only spread the wealth to many neighborhoods, but we're also trying to address the worst roads. And that's not always the easiest task, because the roads in La Plata are in fairly good shape, and I think we're very lucky to have the kind of dollars, and I would applaud the council, because the council has always been very conservative, and we are not using our H U doc, H U R dollars for other purposes other than putting in asphalt, or putting down new asphalt on our roads. We're not out funding positions, we're not buying trucks, we're not buying equipment, we're putting asphalt down, and that's been a very, very positive approach, and I applaud you all for, you know, sticking with that approach.
So so just a final comment, thank you for putting that kind of information on the record, because as I attempted to explain this to two different residents in Clark's Run about trying to spread the funds and where it comes from, so your explanation goes a long way to help that in terms of spreading the wealth throughout the entire town. Thank you.
Yes, all of those dollars are the dollars that we get from the highway user revenue dollars are all monies that are generated by the gasoline and diesel fuel tax, and that is our share of the state money that is collected. So all of those dollars come to us from the state. They are not tax revenue dollars that are generated through property tax or income tax. These are all generated from the gasoline and diesel fuel tax dollars. And a lot of those are people who stop out on three oh one, who may be traveling through and that are helping us to generate the H U R dollar. So it is very well, uh, it's it's a large amount of revenue, and you know, there there was one year when they robbed the Transportation Trust Fund to solve some of the state budget crisis, the town of La Plata got seventeen thousand dollars one year. This year, that's seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is what we're getting from the highway user revenue. So we're very positive about that. That's a large amount of money for the town of La Plata, and we will put it to very good use in repaving streets.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl, your report is always so um, technical. I don't know which questions to ask, so at the end of my question, if you have anything that you need to bring to our awareness, I would appreciate it. But you talked about seven hundred and sixty-three thousand gallons of wastewater at the treat wastewater treated, and then you said one point two million potable water.
Correct.
If we continue to not get rain, what are the consequences for you? It sounds like you were trying to take the seven hundred and sixty-three um, gallons of water and route them through the different um, modules.
That's correct.
And so if we continue to have a drought, will that seven hundred and sixty-three gallons decrease? And then how do you maintain the modules if you don't have the water?
My feeling is, um, it will not go much farther down. I think that, you know, we're we're actually treating the sewage that is generated from the residents and from the commercial properties. When I say I and I, that's inflow and infiltration, that's stormwater that gets into our system, and so I think what we will get down to about seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that's about what is going through the system. The additional water that we're we're selling is because people are watering their lawns a whole lot more, they're watering their flowers and all of those kind of things, and so, you know, there's a lot more potable water that's being utilized for irrigation purposes um, to stay ahead of the drought. So tha- that's why that number's going up. There there really aren't a lot of ramifications to us when you're treating less sewage. Certainly, um, we're not using as much chemical over at the wastewater plant. We're not seeing a big decrease in electric right now, and of course, the labor is going to be about fixed. Repairs and maintenance are about equal, so all of those are, you know, the ongoing costs of running the treatment plant, you're spreading it now over less gallons, but it's still costing about the same, because we, the water we sell, you have to remember, we don't separate water and sewer, so whatever the people are using as far as water is concerned, they're paying for that much sewage, and right now is just an interesting time, because it's one of the few times that I remember where those numbers got flipped, and so normally, we're treating more sewage than we are water. This just happens to be an anomaly because of the dry weather, and it's just one of those things.
Thank you.
The other thing I might point out too, um, down at Patuxent, um, excuse me, at Dig Circle, we are replacing that pump station on Monday, so the crane is set up for Monday. As I pointed out at the last meeting, we did replace the pump station at Clark's Run. So that pump station is in and functioning very well, but we're doing the same thing at Dig Circle this coming Monday, and we are also replacing the pump station at Patuxent Court on Wednesday. So next Monday, we're doing Dig Circle. Next Wednesday, we are doing, and we have put the the pump around in place. We cut both of the force mains, and we put a separate piece in place to be able to pump around. So no one will, other than the disruption of all the trucks and the crane out there and everything that we need to do the job, they won't notice any problems with it. We will still continue to pump sewage, and we will set the pump stations up, but those two neighborhoods will also be done. Nice thing, you know, we we did seven pump stations this year, and um, we're getting them all to the point of very close to completion. Southwest Quadrant is substantially complete, uh, the Triumph Pump Station is substantially complete. We are going to bring you the uh, the new pumps for Rosewick Pump Station at the next in July. You know, I think uh, we've done a tremendous amount of upgrades to our infrastructure. It would certainly be very, very nice right now if we were doing Module Two, which is why we need to get on the testing for Module One. And it's, you know, there's challenges with every, everything's going to be a challenge, and it's just how we work through it. Listen, if I wasn't doing the testing on Module One, I'd be just happy as a clam. We're treating a whole lot less sewage, and the numbers are great. You know, we, the state wants to see that we're really forcing more sewage through Mod One and see what it'll do, but I can't really do that, because then you'll really affect the treatment in the other modules, and so we're working through some of those challenges, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, Director Pips? Any questions for Director Pips? I have some comments. First of all, we're still stuck on twenty-three applications for the
We are, ma'am.
Okay, so we need two more before it's a go, or we can get those.
I've had seven promises.
Okay, let's let's just get two of those promises. So, good for that. Um, love the themes at the farmer's market. And the next one is coming up on uh, the weekend of the sixth.
It's stretch and stretch weekend.
That's that's a good one. And the pocket, the Bird City Pocket part?
We are anticipating a July first dedication.
That looks great.
Yeah, we've had a lot of great feedback from the public, just randomly, how much they enjoy it.
Good, because uh, last year, before we even started, or you all started that, I had someone complaining that there wasn't a place to sit in town. After I pointed out all the benches we have, they apologized, but there's just going to be more areas for them to enjoy. So thank you for all the hard work that you're doing in your capacity and with the different boards. Any comments?
Yes, um, could you send me a copy of that Public Information Act request from Velocity on June eleventh?
Certainly.
Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you so much. All right, that brings us to landscaping services for Melwood. Mr. Manuel?
Taxi, Mr. Stahl.
All right.
Mayor, I bring for you tonight just a renewal for the Melwood contract. We have been working with Melwood now for seventeen years since I came here. I actually had a contract with them at the university, and they always, they are a sheltered workshop, and they provide an excellent service to the community. And in this situation, the renewal is a one point six percent increase in price. I think it's a very worthwhile. Not only do, you know, they they've been doing this for us, they provide a wonderful service, both to the town and to the citizens that they help. I have always been a very big supporter of Melwood, and I would like to continue the contract with the slight increase that they have. I think it works out well for the town. It helps us out. It's manpower that we get through Melwood. It's manpower that we get through Melwood. And it provides opportunities for people who are handicapped. And I think that's a wonderful thing.
That's a great partnership. Any questions from council? All right, so we're looking for consensus to move this forward. Councilman Winkler?
Absolutely.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mayor James is a yes as well. We'll see in just a little bit. Thank you. That brings us to legislation. Mr. Manuel?
Bear with me. I can spill. Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. The first item, ordinance 2409, Town Personnel System. This item is for a second reading and consideration of adoption. An ordinance concerning Town Personnel System for the purpose of amending certain personnel policies in the Town Personnel Manual and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-09 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance 24-09, Town Personnel System as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All right, thank you. Do I have any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just had, I guess, a quick question. The ordinance or the new legislation refers to a town personnel officer. Is that the same thing as our HR director?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor, it has been, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next ordinance. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, ordinance 24-11, Resource Protection Standards. This item is for a second reading and consideration of adoption. An ordinance concerning resource protection standards for the purpose of comprehensively revising and recodifying Town of La Plata Development Regulations relating to the floodplain management and flood hazard areas, forest conservation, storm drainage, stream resources, wetland resources, steep slopes, hydric soils and highly erodible soils, and rare threatened and endangered species and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-11 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2415, Landscaping and, or excuse me, 2411, Resource Protection Standards for purpose of revising and recodifying the Town of La Plata Development Regulations as written.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And it brings us to Resolution 24-15.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Resolution 24-15, Landscaping and Trash Pickup Service Agreement. This item is for introduction and consideration of adoption. Resolution concerning Landscaping and Trash Pickup Service Agreement.
Thank you very much.
Do you feel like me to complete?
Yeah, you know what? You can continue.
For the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for landscaping services and all matters relating thereto.
All right, now I can say thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 24-15 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to enact Resolution 2415, Landscaping and Trash Pickup Agreement as written.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, that brings us to new business reports from a town council. Councilman Winkler?
I have nothing to report again.
All right. Councilman Trolinger?
I do have a report. Keep La Plata Beautiful Commission met this Monday. As Director Pips noted, we do have a July 1 dedication for the Pocket Park. We also had three new Eastern Bluebird boxes installed at Tillman Lake by the Girl Scouts. So that's pretty exciting. We do have a potential vacancy filled. I would like to recommend Eric Follason to be admitted as a member of our committee because he's expressed a lot of interest in the town of La Plata being sustainable. Immediately upon his interview on Monday, talked about litter cleanup and plastic bags being a threat to our community as far as natural habitat and recycling issues. As far as his background, he moved here in November of 2022 from Silver Spring, Maryland. He is employed with University of Maryland Medical System as the Regional Director of Operations. So he deals with maintenance of facilities, many other issues. He's born and raised in New York. He does have a young daughter here who is three years old. They are enjoying dance and karate in our area. He's very motivated to making a difference in his community. And I would recommend that the town council approve his, I'm going to make a motion to admit him onto our committee going forward and that will fulfill the current vacancy on Keep La Plata Beautiful Commission.
Could you say his name again, please?
Yeah, Eric Follason. F A L L E S O N. And he is a resident of the town of La Plata.
Fantastic. So council, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to accept Mr. Follason for the committee?
A second to motion.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought I made the, yeah, I mean.
You did.
Yep.
Yep, so we've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And thank him very much for willing to serve his new community. We look forward to seeing what he can do and all of his enthusiasm. It sounds like he has some wonderful ideas, so thank you. And do you have anything else on your report?
No, Director Pips actually had a good outline in our reports already, so I'm not going to recover that. But we're excited about the work that Ms. Wang and the rest of our committees doing in the community.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
No report.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, thank you. I'm a member, I'm a representative from the Maryland Municipal League to the Rural Legacy Advisory Committee. So we had our annual meeting yesterday virtually where we consider expansion of existing rural areas or new ones. So we took a vote on three new ones up in Baltimore County, two in Baltimore County and one on a couple on the eastern shore and then some expansions of existing ones. And then we voted to fund a different funding formula. Unfortunately, this year, the funding was cut. I believe that the total amount of money right now is 15 million versus 33 million last year. So there's a significant cut of interest. So the vote was that we would fund as much as we could for all the regions in Maryland, including Southern Maryland. But unfortunately, the Sakaya and the other watershed will not get money because they still have some outstanding funds from FY22. The fact that the Sakaya has not spent close to $2.7 million. So the staff will be reaching out to Charles Kind to understand why they haven't spent that money yet. And if there's any interest, I can certainly forward the slides and other information from our annual meeting. And that was subject to your questions. That's my report.
Thank you very much. And for my report this evening, please be informed that our offices will be closed tomorrow in observance of Juneteenth. So please check the website for rescheduled trash pickup, but your recyclables will still be the same. We will resume regular business hours on Thursday, June 20. If you haven't had the opportunity to come out to our Friday night concerts, you are missing out. This week, we have Pork Donut and it's kind of like a play on words because many of them are police officers or serve in law enforcement. So they are a fabulous band. And we've got Off the Grid coming up on June 28. And we have a whole, we have five bands in July that are really worth your time coming out to see. If you haven't stopped by for the kids or put it on your calendar for the Kids' Summer Show, we've got one June 25th. It's Mr. John and Friends. He won the Parents' Choice Award for music for kids and their family. It's an energetic family music event with fun movement and laughter. And it's about 45 minutes. It'll be right out here on the stage. And then July 9, we have Rainbow Rock Band. And are you ready to rock the rainbow? It's been asked. So they will entertain your kiddos with tunes, laughs and more. They were also winners of a Parents' Choice Fun Stuff Awards for their debut CD. So they may even be a little famous there. So make sure that you come out and check on the website for the time. I believe it's 10 o'clock. But we also have our Fourth of July celebration that will be on the Fourth of July, Thursday, and it's from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. We'll have a water slide, ice cream, airbrush, tattoos, music, lots of fun. And there'll be food for purchase. I understand Chick-fil-A will be there, Judy's Food Express and Pizza Hotline. And then one last thing is please note that there will be no meeting next week as we will be attending the annual Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference. Our next town meeting will be July 30. So we have a little bit of a break there. But in the interim, please, if you have any questions during this time, do not hesitate to contact us directly. We are here for you. So with that said, thank you very much for a very productive meeting and I move to adjourn this meeting. Have a good night. Yeah, oh, I'm not quite, oh, do we have to go into closed session for something? You know, I've got it. I was on a roll too. All right, how about we have to go into closed session? I will look for a motion to go into closed session immediately following this council meeting. If anyone would like to make a motion. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, if you'd like to.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move to a closed session immediately following the normal council meeting.
Got to read off that.
Oh, okay. Motion for closed session immediately following the council meeting. Statutory authority to close session, general provisions, Article 3-305B. To consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, to obtain legal advice for potential litigation. Statutory authority to close session, general provisions, 3-305B. To discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointee, employee or official over whom it has jurisdiction, topic being personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we will do roll call. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye or when your name is called, Madam Clerk. If not, please say nay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Trolinger?
Aye.
Councilman Winkler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes. All right.
Motion passes.
Are good now to adjourn this meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for coming. This meeting has been adjourned.